I'd like to call this meeting to order. Karla, can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Long.
Here.
Commissioner Berman. Commissioner Savage.
Here.
Vice Chair Moffett.
Here.
Chair Gilardi.
Here.
Item three, land acknowledgement. The city of Kattati recognizes. The city of Kattati recognizes that we're on ancestral lands of the coastal Mewalk. We are the original, excuse me, who are the original caretakers of this area. We respectfully acknowledge. Have been stewarding and maintaining the relationship of this land and knowledge keepers for millennium. This acknowledgement does not take the place of authentic relationship with indigenous communities, but it serves as a jester to respect the land for which we are on. Now we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the June 17th meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was not at the meeting, so I will not vote on that. Item seven, public comment. There's anyone who wishes to address us on a non-agendized item? Seeing none. Carlos, are there anyone online?
Thank you, Chair Gilardi. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. Chair Gilardi, that'll end, excuse me, Chair Gilardi, that'll end public comment.
Thank you. Item. A Kattati Village Two preliminary design review and tree removal permit to allow construction of a 126-unit multifamily mixed-use development.
Good evening, Chair Gilardi, members of the planning commission. I'm Autumn Bus, Associate Planner for the city. This evening, we are asking you to consider making a recommendation to the city council to approve entitlements for the Kattati Village Two project. I'll be making my presentation. We also have with us tonight. The bulk of the audience is actually members of the development team here to present the project, and they'll be making a brief presentation following mine. And then we also have in attendance Heather Gurwitz with M Group, here in the front, who prepared the environmental analysis for the project, and she'll be here to answer questions if those come up on the sequoia analysis. Next slide, please. I'm going to go into a fair amount of detail later, and as you know, there's a lot of detail in the written staff report, but I want to give a quick overview before we get deep into the project here. Kattati Village Two proposes 126 rental apartments in two residential buildings. The project also would include a separate smaller commercial building of just over 2,000 square feet in size. Open space improvements, Wunorf, the Kattatis first, Wunorf, and parking and public improvements are also included as part of the project proposal. The site is largely vacant. There is existing development along the Gravenstein Highway or 116 highway side of the project, 7,800 square feet of commercial development, which is currently occupied by Jane Dispensary and Acre Pizza. There's also a 44-space parking lot around that commercial. This project requires two different types of city entitlements. One is design review, and the other is a tree removal permit. And because the project proposes the removal of a small number of heritage oak trees, with that tree removal permit, the entire entitlement approval goes up to the city council level because only the city council can approve removal of a heritage oak tree in Kattati. For that reason, design review is also going to be referred to the city council for approval as well, even though that would typically fall under the planning commission's purview otherwise. This project uses the state density bonus law, and I'll go into some details about what that means for this project later on. The zoning for that site is general, Gravenstein, general, commercial Gravenstein corridor, which is CG zoning, which typically allows a range of 12 to 15 units, dwelling units per acre. Next slide, please. So, looking at the project site, sorry, this is a little bit small. You can see a little red outline there. That's our project site for Kattati Village Two, as it is today. The project is at the northwest corner of Alder and 116, and it's 5.62 acres in size. Immediately across Alder to the east is the Kattati Village One project site, and that is sort of like a sister project, kind of the big sister, because it's already received its entitlements, it's 177 units apartments. And the development team that's proposing Kattati Village Two is also going to build Kattati Village One, and they view these as two phased projects, really a single-phase project. On the other side of Kattati Village One to the east is the proposed Redwood Row residential development. At the northeast corner of the project, up above Ford Lane, is the existing cottages community. To the north of the site is primarily a vacant property, some vehicle storage goes on there as well. To the west, on the left side, there is the Kattati Animal Hospitals, and immediately to the south across 116 is Shamrock Materials business. Next slide, please. So, this site has been, has gone through a few changes over the past several years. In 2019, the city approved a project for commercial development and a residential care facility for the elderly at the site. The residential care facility was never constructed. The commercial space has been constructed along with the frontage improvements or frontage improvements on 116 and Alder Avenue. And all of that development is at the southern end of the site, close to 116. The commercial, as I said, is occupied by Jane Dispensary and Acre Pizza. In February of last year, the applicant submitted an SB 330 application for the Kattati Village Two project, in substantially the form, number of units that you see tonight. SB 330, Senate Bill 330 process, allows a project to come in with a preliminary application that sets a vesting date for fees and development standards for a project. And then the development team can continue refining their project while those fees and standards are essentially frozen at that date, which is February 2023 for this project. In November of last year, we held a neighborhood meeting for the project. We had one attendee. We did do our typical noticing, which is a mailing to addresses within 500 feet. In this case, we went further to bring in more of the residential in the area. We've also had the project information on the city's Projects and Projects and Progress website since last fall. In March of this year, we received the full application, complete application for design review and the tree removal permit for the project. Next slide, please. So, zooming in on the project site a little more closely. It's actually two contiguous parcels that make up this project site, the southernmost parcel with the existing commercial development, and you can see that there, close to 116 with its parking. There is along the, in the upper corner on the right-hand side, there is an existing single-family home, which is vacant and fairly dilapidated, and that is proposed to be removed for this project. There are a number of trees along the western edge of the site. There's 41 trees. In fact, on the property, most of those trees will be retained with the development. And there on the other side of Alder Avenue to the east, you see the Kattati Village One project site. Okay, next slide, please. So, this project is proposing 126 apartments. They're divided between one, two, and three-bedroom units. There are 13 units that are proposed to be below market rate. Oh, well, we also call those inclusionary units. Those will be affordable to households of very low income levels. And that's part of the density bonus project aspect of the project. The commercial, so you see those two buildings kind of at 90-degree angles. Those are the residential buildings. Down in the corner, on the right-hand side, is the commercial building. It's labeled café, because that's what the owners are hoping to tenant the space with, is a café. That would actually be access, the residential is accessed by that big U-shaped driveway you see up there. It would be one way with the access coming in at the northern end off of Alder Avenue, looping around, and then exiting at the south back onto Alder. And before that exit, the brownish strip of road you see down there with the meander, that's the Wunorf. So, there will be this Wunorf element that connects the residential with the café and the existing commercial space. There's also, as you can see, there's the open space alongside the residential building B up there, significant open space. There's a couple of playgrounds proposed. There's an oak grove proposed, which would be anchored by one of the existing heritage oaks on the site, and then flushed out with new oak trees that would be planted there. The driveway accesses 153 off-street parking spaces, which is the amount of off-street parking that the project is proposing. There's also landscaping, lighting, and utilities that come along with this project. Also 43 bike parking spaces. Next slide, please. So, part of this project includes a number of public improvements. There are two multi-use paths, class one multi-use paths proposed. One would be along 116, so to the, on the southern edge of the project, along the frontage of the existing commercial, and that's in keeping with our active transportation plan. And will connect up with the path, which will run along the front of Kattati Village One as well. There's also a path proposed along the western edge of the property, from the north to the south, and it will terminate at the northern end of the property. If future development happens, then hopefully the path can continue north. Will connect to the path on 116. The project will also install bike lanes and sidewalk, street trees, and nine parking spaces along Alder Avenue between the area in front of the café and the northern property line. The project is also required to make some land dedications to the city. One is on Alder for a future cul-de-sac of Alder, which is called for in the general plan. And you can just barely see the outline of that on the right side, next to Bachelor Lane there. There's an outline of where that cul-de-sac will be, should it come to pass. There is also a proposed north-south road along the western edge of the property. That's also in the general plan. And so, the other land dedication that the project includes is a dedication of land for that future roadway, again, should that take place. Utility undergrounding is also included in the project. Next slide, please. So, because this project will bring a number of residents and vehicles to Alder Avenue and then out onto 116, the traffic analysis, traffic impact analysis was conducted for the project. And the conclusion was that some changes are needed. Currently, Alder is stop-controlled, so as vehicles come along Alder, they stop before they can come onto 116. And with the new volume of traffic from the project, that probably is not going to be sustainable. The traffic study, in fact, showed that what would happen would be about a level of service F, according to the scale of level of service, which is the throughput through intersections, runs A through F. So, F is the bottom. And the city's general plan sets a minimum level of service of D for the city. And so, some mitigation is needed. There are two primary options that are included in the conditions of approval for this project, and which one is chosen will be a subject of further development of the project and discussion between the development team and city staff. Option one is to work with routing the traffic to 116 via Alder Avenue. And that would include installing a traffic signal at Alder and 116, adding a left-turn lane from Alder coming southbound onto 116, and adding a left-turn lane from 116 onto Alder from eastbound 116. So, these are all, these are things that the project would be required to do. So, that, the traffic impact analysis projects that that would bring, those changes would bring Alder and 116 up to a level of service B, which is acceptable. However, because there is this potential cul-de-sac on Alder in the future and the addition of a north-south street on the west side, it might be that in the future, a traffic signal at Alder is not actually the optimal solution for the general circulation in the larger neighborhood. And for that reason, we have looked at a second option, next slide, please, which is to route traffic from the project to and from 116 via West Kattati Avenue. And as you most likely know, the realignment of West Kattati Avenue is a project that the city already has plans and is working on designs for. Under this option, the, the project would be responsible for completing the West Kattati Avenue realignment. Bachelor Lane, which is that east-west line across the top up there, going through the Kattati Village One project, that would need to be completed and made public. And then, in order to reduce the traffic coming and going on Alder, because it wouldn't be signal-controlled, a median would be extended along 116 so that Alder would be right in and right out only via 116, so no left turns. So, this is actually, so the completion of Bachelor Lane is something that the Kattati Village One project includes. Okay, so that would happen as long as Kattati Village One goes forward. Both of these projects, Kattati Village One and Kattati Village Two, are already contributing to, through their traffic impact fees, funds that could be used for the realignment project. There, this option, this project would be fully responsible for those improvements in order to gain occupancy of the completed Kattati Village One. So, it would not actually hinge entirely on Kattati Village One being completed. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, I want to take a few minutes to just, well, seconds to look at the design here. Here's looking at building B from the west side of courtyard. Next slide, please. This is looking at both residential buildings from the courtyard, from the playground. Actually, it looks like the oak grove area as well, looking across the common open space courtyard. Next slide, please. This is the design for the commercial space or café. Note that it echoes the design of the existing commercial buildings on Gravenstein, so it differs from the residential so that it can tie in more with that commercial development. Next slide, please. And then finally, we have the Alder Avenue streetscape. So, on the far-left side there is the existing commercial, and then we have the new proposed commercial building and the residential buildings as viewed from Alder. Next slide, please. So, the approvals process for this project is, as I described already, this, we do need to take this project to the city council for approval of preliminary design review and tree removal permit for the heritage oaks proposed to be removed. Following that, there are some additional approvals as well. Final design review most likely would be completed at the staff level. The affordable housing agreement for the inclusionary or BMR, below-market-rate units, would need to be approved by the city council as well. Following that, improvement plans and the construction permits would be submitted. Construction permits, building permits, also approved at the staff level. And we're hoping to take this to the city council on August 27th. Next slide, please. I want to go over how the state density bonus law works and is utilized by this project. So, so as you know, the state density bonus law sets its own standards, in a way, and the aspects of the project that use the state density bonus and the density bonus itself are not discretionary to the city, which means the city can't deny them. The density bonus law allows increased density. It reduces, typically reduces parking minimums. It has its own parking minimums, which are lower than the city's current standards. In addition, developers are, projects are allowed a certain amount of concessions and waivers from city standards, and I'll go into those in a moment. So, these are all in exchange for a certain number of below-market-rate units. So, the way that we calculate the density bonus for this project is as follows. So, the bonus is 50% on the base density, or the, yeah, the base density, for 15% of the units being BMRs. So, according to the CG zoning, the maximum density is 15 units of the acre typically. This is a 5.62-acre site, so the yield for a base density is 84 units. We take 15% of that 84 that are the very low-income BMR units, that's 13 units. That provides a 50% bonus, so 50% of 84 is 42 units. And then we add the base units and the density bonus units together, and we get 126 units, which is what's being proposed. And those are, those affordable units are income-restricted for at least 55 years per the terms of our affordability agreement with the owners. Next slide, please. So, state density bonus also sets certain parking minimums for residential. So, according to those standards in the state law, this project should provide 166 off-street residential parking spaces. According to our code, the project should be, provide 332 spaces. As you know, the city is currently in the process of considering revisions to its multifamily parking minimums, and that's part of the proposed Plex Housing and zoning ordinance update, zoning update ordinance that's came to you and is currently in process with the council coming up for a second reading next week. And so, if that, that will reduce our multifamily parking minimum so that what would actually be required would be closer to that 166, if our code is changed. So, the project is proposing 153 off-street spaces for the residential in addition to utilizing a shared parking with the commercial space, which currently has 44 parking spaces. It's required to have 40, according to our code. And that's with the new commercial space, the new café as well. The density bonus does not impact commercial parking. It's only the residential parking. In addition, the development team is proposing to use the new on-street parking spaces on Alder, of which there'll be nine, to count towards its parking requirements. So, if you take that 153 for spaces out of the commercial, nine on-street, that does add up to 206, which is what would actually be required if you took what the state density bonus requires and our commercial parking requirements. Next slide, please. So, the concessions and waivers of city standards in the density bonus law are there to ensure that a project that uses this law can actually build its affordable units and its density bonus units, that it's actually financially feasible and physically feasible to build those projects. And consequently, there are a number of waivers for this project in order to get those units built. Those are described in great detail on the staff report. I'll go over them quickly here. One is building height. So, the maximum for the code is three stories. The developer is proposing a four-story height for both of the residential buildings, also reducing the requirement for commercial floor area in the overall project. A waiver of the requirement that residential buildings meet a build-two line in that zone, which means that they need to be built up to the sidewalk, essentially. The orientation of the residential buildings is actually away from the street in this case, and so they don't meet that requirement. Some adjustment of the Wunorf standards, although fairly minor. Also, structures and parking are placed in the side setbacks, which typically is not allowed by our code. There's a reduced land dedication for the future north-south street on the west side. Residential buildings not oriented towards the street, oriented instead towards the common space. And then, as I mentioned, applying off-street parking to the parking requirement and allowing shared parking between the commercial and the residential. So, none of these are up to the city to deliberate on, and they're not part of the entitlements process. They just are part of the density bonus package. Next slide, please. What we do get to review, I'm going to go into our review of the project from the planning perspective. The general plan designation is general commercial. The zoning is commercial Gravenstein corridor. This project is consistent with both of those designations. Those call for commercial use of the property, retail office. It does allow mixed-use projects, residential and commercial as well, which this project is, and has a density range of 12 to 15 units per acre. And the base density proposed here is consistent with 15 units to the acre. Next slide, please. We also review the project for, from the design review perspective through the lens of all of the city's development standards, including our multifamily objective design standards. Those standards look at architecture and building design, site layout, the open space and amenities that the project provides, the landscaping, and connection to or availability of city services. And the staff finds that the project is consistent in all of those ways with the code. Next slide, please. In regard to the tree removal permit, there, as I mentioned before, there are 41 trees on the site. They are primarily valley oaks. The proposal is to remove five of the trees, and three of those are oaks, one redwood, and one Mexican fan palm. So, the subject of the, you know, going to the city council is really, it's about the valley oaks. And truly, the oaks that are proposed to be removed, based on the Arborist report, they are of a slightly smaller size, and they're not necessarily in the best health. So, and they are in the way of where the buildings will go. There will be 36 trees retained on the site, again, primarily along the western side of the property. And in exchange for removal of the trees, there are mitigation trees required to be planted. And so, there's a fairly significant ratio of mitigation trees for oak trees. So, 24 new valley oak trees will need to be planted on the site. Some of those are in that common space oak grove, and others are more on the periphery of the site. There are 16 additional trees that will also be planted as mitigation trees on the site in exchange for the redwood and the Mexican fan palm. The number of mitigation trees is actually too many to fit onto the site because we don't want to crowd the valley oaks because they get so big. And so, the project will also make a payment to our Tree-in-Lu fund in the amount of 31 oaks at $300 each, and that'll be for future tree planting projects elsewhere in the city. Taking into account the mitigation trees and the number of trees that are just required by our and the number of trees that are just required by our zoning code as part of the landscaping, the project will be planting 66 new trees on the site. Next slide, please. So one of the key benefits to the city is the affordable units that are that are coming with this project. So again, it's 13 units for very low-income households. We require that those units be provided proportional to the overall unit mix of of bedroom bedroom count. So we have five one-bedrooms, five two-bedrooms and three three-bedrooms that will be our affordable units in this project. They are spread throughout the development and they'll be subject to the affordable housing agreement, which needs to be executed before the building permit issuance. Next slide. So as I mentioned earlier, we did conduct environmental project. We determined that the project is consistent with the general plan and the zoning and that no unidentified or project-specific impacts that are peculiar to the project or site were identified. And therefore, we, the project is able to use, under Sequel Guidelines 15183, an environmental analysis that tears from our general plan EIR, which was done in 2015. And the mitigation measures from that EIR will also apply to this project. There are additional mitigation measures that have been identified by the 15183 analysis and those appear in the conditions of approval for this project. Next slide. This often happens after we submit our document and it's circulated, we find some mistakes. And so there are a few revisions that we would are asking the planning commission to make to the conditions of approval, which are in your resolution tonight, so that we can correct them before we go to the city council. These first set are really just correcting some inconsistencies, redundancies, mistakes. The first is merging conditions one and five. And conditions one and five, I'm sorry to spring this on you. Conditions one and five relate to the project vesting date and when, at what point do the fees and standards kick in for this project? And I'm just going to tell you right now what page those are on. 1,000 lots, 1,006, okay. So, thank you. Okay, so starting at 1,006 of your packet. So currently, conditions one and five are redundant and actually a little bit inconsistent. We need to tie those both to the project vesting date. So we're going to collapse them, tie into the project's vesting date in February 2023. In addition, in the conditions 18, those are related to projects that are called for in the general plan for which there's a land dedication required, as I've mentioned, the cul-de-sac and the future north-south road. Those, we had one of them that said it would expire if the if the project was never completed or the cul-de-sac was never completed. And so we'd also like to apply that expiration language to the north-south road. Or it might be vice versa, I can't remember which. But we left out the expiration language. So if those projects that this general plan calls for are not completed, the dedication, land dedication will expire. We also are asked, would like to add that the city engineer will make a determination regarding the extent of resurfacing of Alder Avenue following the project, and that's in condition 37. Currently, we just missed that and it appears elsewhere in relation to that piece of the project. And then also, the the conditions that you've reviewed stated that the landscaping installation would all be done at once. Prior to building occupancy, the applicant does intend to try to phase in occupancy, completion and occupancy of the buildings, in which case it makes sense to allow them to complete the landscaping also phased so that the landscaping will be phased in so that they can obtain occupancy permits for the buildings as they go. And I can answer questions about this afterwards, too. I know it's, I know it's something you haven't had a chance to look at yet. Next slide, please. Again, that's all, those are all kind of housekeeping items. A couple of items for the conditions of approval that the development team has requested. We have not yet had a chance to discuss them with the public works department because it's within their purview. One is condition 26, which currently states the mailbox locations must be submitted to the city and approved before the improvement plans. And we actually, the development team is asking to tie those to the building permit, which comes subsequent to the improvement plans. So we'll be asking the public works about, department about that. And if that's okay with them, we would take that to the city council. Similarly, condition 30 requires a dry utility plan at the time of improvement plan submittal. And the applicant is asking that that be a preliminary dry utility plan and that the final would be subject to PG&E. Okay, next slide, please. Okay. So having said all of that, we have a staff recommendation for you. The staff recommends that the planning can it's been a long presentation, sorry, you guys. The staff recommends that the planning commission conduct a public hearing and adopt the accompanying resolution, finding that the project is consistent with the general plan environmental impact report and exempt from further environmental review under Sequel Guidelines Section 15183, and recommending that the city council approve preliminary design review and a tree removal permit to allow construction of a multifamily mixed-use development of 126 apartments and 2,250 square feet of commercial space on a 5.62 acre property located at 7515 Alder Avenue and 8145 Gravenstein Highway. Next slide, please. That concludes my presentation. As I mentioned, the applicant team would also like to make a presentation of the project. Before we go into that, I'd like to suggest that that if the planning commission has clarifying questions of me regarding the material that I've just presented, that we address those now and then go into the applicant's presentation and then comments. If that's okay with the chair.
Thank you, Autumn. Are there questions?
When you were talking about the two options for getting on 116, option one, option two, is that something we need to come to agreement on tonight?
No. If you have comments on that, that would be appreciated and appropriate here. However, the traffic study that was done outlines those two options and the conditions of approval have both options, a sort of an either-or.
Okay.
Okay. As well as the option for some additional study that if the applicant chooses further traffic analysis and development of additional options, and that would be in coordination with the city to develop other options that might meet the same objectives, which is to maintain that level of service D or above.
Okay, thank you.
When you're looking at phasing required landscaping with the phasing of the building, I just want to be clear that condition 12 with the traffic is not a phased situation where any occupancy of any building has to have first met traffic standards? That makes sense?
Yes, it does. I'm not sure what the answer is, so.
Yeah, right now, there is no proposed phasing of occupancy associated with traffic improvements. So all the improvements would be done and complete to allow residents to move onto site. I will say if some of those improvements, some of the reasons for the flexibility is just because there's a lot of moving pieces between the city's realignment project of West Cotati, the adjacent project Cotati Village 1, and this project Cotati Village 2, and essentially who's going to be constructing which pieces of those improvements and and when? And so because of that, there, that's part of the reason for the flexibility built into the conditions. There could be some occupancy elements that are pieces of that spread amongst those projects, but not specific to this only project with regards to Alder Avenue and level of service. Does that make sense?
I think your answer made about as much sense as my question did, so. Yes.
Okay.
Going back to the traffic study, I caught the the improvements to Alder Avenue got a grade of B. Did the other one, the other option, did you see what the grade was for that?
Yeah, I might have missed that, a level of service C.
C.
Yeah, so still, still acceptable. And probably because that intersection would be also subject to traffic from Cotati Village 1 as well, so a lot more going on there. Although potentially, you know, traffic from Cotati Village 1 would also be coming out at Alder if Alder was open and signalized as well.
Did it capture that in the first option? Having Cotati Village 1 going through Alder? And so it's still issued a grade of.
Yeah, they, their, their review is based on the project itself and then other proposed development in the area and what kind of demand that will create on the circulation network.
I, I remembered talking about the traffic plans when we looked at Cotati Village 1, but I don't remember what was finalized with that as far as the conditions for their traffic improvements. Can you, do you remember? Was it, was it requiring improvements at that, at the West Cotati intersection?
So my understanding is that that Cotati Village 1 would be paying its traffic impact fee, which would be most likely used towards the West Cotati realignment project. It's up to the city's discretion as the use of those funds, but that that would be the key project that would that would have a connection to that. In addition, the Cotati Village 1 project is conditioned to provide the the left turn lane on onto Alder from 116 so that as cars are traveling into town, if they want to make that left, they'll have this left turn pocket that doesn't exist. So that would be a major traffic safety improvement. So that's a requirement that Cotati Village 1 has, which would then pass to Cotati Village 2 if Cotati Village 1 doesn't do it.
Yeah.
Or doesn't come to pass. But then would also be obviated if Alder is not actually the primary point of access and West Cotati is. In that case, that left turn lane wouldn't actually be needed because we'd have this median extension across the Alder entrance and exit for so there would be no left turn lanes. Cotati Village 1 is also conditioned to install a left turn lane on Alder southbound onto 116, just like the left turn lane on 116. That's a requirement that would pass to Cotati Village 2 if Cotati Village 1 doesn't complete it. But then again, may not be necessary if Alder becomes right in, right out only with that median extension and with the traffic routed through West Cotati.
Are they looking at options where there could potentially be traffic lights at both intersections?
Not really.
No, so it's going to kind of end up being.
It's our, our, well, our feeling is that, you know, this all requires Caltrans approval.
Right.
There's a concern that especially with the future north-south road planned for the west side of the Cotati Village 2 site, that's just too many traffic signals. And I was going to say something else about that, but I lost my train of thought. Want to add on?
I would just say there is, the general plan itself, part of the reason for the proposed cul-de-sac at Alder is to eliminate that need for two signals because it doesn't meet Caltrans standards for the distance, or it didn't, at least at the time when the general plan was written.
Where was that cul-de-sac at, again, on Alder?
It's approximately, it would be kind of just north of where the cafe building is proposed and kind of right at the, basically the build, the project's exit and Bachelor Lane. So basically, it would be sort of like the path of travel would bisect that that cul-de-sac.
And right now, for the Cotati cottages, their primary in and out is Alder. Right, correct.
Or Hellman.
Or Hellman coming in from the back. So if, so if the, all the traffic's being routed through Cotati, if they did do West Cotati, all the traffic would be routed through Cotati Villages 1 to West Cotati to come out that way.
Unless, well, so, but traffic wishing to go to Sebastopol or points west would be coming out Alder and making a right. And then there's the option to go up to Hellman Lane, still.
That's kind of all I had on the traffic stuff. When they were looking, actually, I had one more. When they were looking at the the C grade versus the B grade, a lot of times they look at like estimated wait times and the traffic plans. Do you know what that difference was from grade to grade?
Not offhand. I don't know how much it is between the levels of service. Don't happen to know, do you? They actually, you, did you memorize the the traffic study, Heather, to know? You brought it with me.
Okay, yeah, I'm just kind of curious what creates a bump up from a B to a C or bump down, I guess?
So I'm reading the report. It's a lot of numbers. Yeah, I don't know, I would have to look at it more carefully. And can we come back to that question?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you could get a set answer at some point, that'd be good.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm getting a lot of like feedback with my mic right now. Then looking at the the waivers, it looked like there was nine granted for the project. What goes into that number deciding that number? Because I know there's, there's the waivers, there's concessions, and I always kind of get mixed up between the two. But some of them are kind of more defined on what's allowed based on, I believe, the number of units, affordable units that are being designated where they get a certain amount. And then some is more kind of discretionary.
Yeah, so it is confusing. So the concessions are limited in number. This project qualifies for three. And so, and and it is using two of them. And my understanding is the concessions are associated with the the provision of the affordable units. The waivers are unlimited in number and they are associated with the ability to construct the density bonus units. In practice, in our review or in 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 practice, there's no difference between the concessions and the waivers. I don't know why they are written into the state law the way that they are. But in terms of how the developer is able to avail themselves of them and how it impacts our review and our project, there's no difference. So the number nine is not, is not a magic number. It's, it's the number that this project is proposing. Says that they need.
And they've all, they've been, they would, would be accepted as is, as it be approved?
Yeah, so the the way that it works, and I believe this is a result of case law, is that the burden of proof as to whether the concessions and waivers are justified financially and physically on the site is on the jurisdiction. And the burden of proof is very high. And the, the, the challenge of trying to analyze that and make a case is, is a large challenge and possibly legally fraught.
Could we pull them back up real quick, the waivers? I just kind of want to see what they were again.
A couple back. Still going, still going. There we go. Oops, there we go. Okay. Sorry, I, we're looking at the traffic study over here, sorry. There they are.
I think the one that with the parking, so without the added commercial space added, added into the total parking, it still met the required state, right? Or did they need the state requirement?
No, it did not. So I believe it's 166 is. No, it did not. So I believe it's 166 is what would be required off-street per the density bonus law, just for the residential. The project is providing 153. They are also proposing to use the off-street parking, so that's nine spaces, and then allow shared parking between the commercial and the residential. And I would like to note too that the use of off-street parking and the shared parking provision, those are both also subject to potential change in our code with the Plex Housing Ordinance update. Both of those provisions would be allowable if these changes take place with that ordinance with a use permit. Whereas right now, they're not. Off-street parking is definitely not. Shared parking is allowed only in very limited situations.
Great, got that from my own understanding. The city ordinance doesn't currently allow for that, what's being requested, but with what we went through with the multi-housing, we are gonna allow that.
With a use permit, yeah, which, you know, this project is not, not requiring a use permit, but in the future, a use permit could allow those provisions.
Is the ownership the same between the commercial and Katati Village 2? It is?
Yeah.
And then did the, with, when the actual commercial parking was determined, what kind of went into that, for that property at that time?
So I was the planner on that. So it was based on a commercial shopping center standard, which does kind of anticipate a variety of uses. And then there was additional capacity. Basically, they had more parking than was needed for that parking requirement per the city. And so that's how they're able to capture those four additional parking spaces to contribute to this project in that they're essentially overparked currently per the standard.
So it's that four overpark that's kind of being allocated to meet the state total on this project?
The proposed total for this project, that's correct.
And then with the Katati Cottage residence, has there been any outreach or conversations that have taken place on this project?
Yeah, our one attendee at our neighborhood. Oh, sorry. Our one attendee at the neighborhood meeting was a resident of the cottages.
And that was, that took place at the property?
That was actually here. It was a meeting that the city sponsored here. It's a requirement for all projects of this size. And that was in November of last year and we did outreach, you know, did our mailing two weeks in advance before the meeting and took in all of the cottages' addresses. And we had, we had the one attendee. We also received a comment letter from a different resident of the cottages, which was forwarded to you this afternoon.
Okay, I got that.
And I would just add, all the outreach effort that we made for Katati Village 1, we identified that this project was also proposed at the time we had a neighborhood meeting that the council directed us to hold specifically with the cottages' residents at their property. The developer had filed this application or at least identified that it was being considered at that time. So we had some information and we shared it at that time and let them know that they would be receiving notification for this. And we put the onsite public hearing sign up 10 days ahead of this meeting, doing what we could to ensure full transparency with the pending decision.
Do you know what, what comments came from that one attendee regarding the project?
Very few that I recall. No one I were both there, no Howard.
Yeah, it was the HOA Vice President, his name's Howard. He was primarily, at that time, there was still ongoing discussions between the owner of CV1 and their HOA regarding how those two projects were going to essentially interact. And I would say his focus was still primarily on that project and that interaction at that time. I think he did voice some concerns over traffic impacts on the cottages and, which we have heard, when events are held at the existing commercial, the potential for spillover traffic from those attendees at events to impact the cottages' residents. Essentially spillover commercial traffic impacting cottage residents when there's an event held at. Yeah.
I think my biggest concern would be the traffic and kind of how that's going to impact the area. And so, you know, understanding that there's a requirement for flexibility, but then also, you know, not allowing so much flexibility where it's detrimental to the area. So you're talking about there also being other, the opportunity to explore other options for the traffic. You know, how would that play out and how would that be incorporated into the approval process?
So because there's a few moving pieces, essentially staff had to analyze this project as a standalone project, assuming that Katati Village 1 may not happen, although the developer owns both sites. They've indicated to us they fully intend to build both projects, but we have to treat them as standalone because one could be sold, maybe one's not built. To your point about ownership of the commercial property, we have to get an easement over that property to ensure parking access is there. And then you add some complexity of the city's project to improve 116 and the West Katati intersection. And then the fact that the general plan identifies the cul-de-sac being put on Alder in all traffic from those properties or projects being funneled up and around onto Hellman. We wanted to have some flexibility there as these very, these three, essentially three projects move forward in case one of them gets out further ahead of the other, some additional information gets learned as to how that project's going to get built, namely the city project is what I'm thinking in this situation. Or if one of the projects is sold or something like that, we wanted that flexibility in hand. But primarily, we're thinking right now, signaling West Katati, funneling traffic through the Katati Village 1 site to a signaled intersection, and then making whatever safety improvements are needed on Alder to allow all those pieces to move together is the best approach. We just have to allow various pieces because of the nature of how these projects are moving forward.
That's all I got right now.
Can I, I'd like to address the question about the level of service, the delay differences. So just, so there's sort of, there's a range, you know, in seconds of delay. So more seconds longer that one is sitting at the stoplight or the intersection. So just for instance, with level of service B at the West Katati intersection in the future with the project, there'd be a 16-second delay. 16. I think that's, I didn't write that part down before I gave her back her computer. But yeah, so coming, coming out onto 116, so a 16-second delay is level of service B. At level of service C, that delay is going to go up to 21.4 seconds. Okay, so, you know, an increment of five plus seconds. But again, I think there's, there's a range of that, you know, that delay is a certain number of seconds within each level of service. So that's the AM peak and the PMP, the delay is actually a little bit longer, but it still meets level of service C.
Sorry, the AMP and the PMP?
The AM peak and the PMP.
Oh, the AMP peaks.
Yeah, yeah. And if, you know, so Heather Gerwitz from M Group is also here and she can address, you know, further questions that we may have about the traffic analysis and the difference between significant and insignificant impacts.
The B was a 16-second delay, the C would have been at 24.
21, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. Can you clarify for me, if I remember right, there's on Alder proposed for nine on-street, but there's a possibility of those going away depending on how Alder can get realigned? That's what I read, I believe?
No, the, no, I don't, I don't think that's the case. I think that regardless of what the traffic circulation pattern ends up being and the treatment of Alder at 116, those nine parking spaces will remain the same. So those are there, they're part of the project. Yeah, they're accounted for in the space that is allocated there on the roadway.
And I think this would be for Noah. Do we have any ideas? Is there any type of update as far as Caltrans on the 116 project?
Right now, the project is in, there's a contract out to have 100% design plans done. The city's designed it to a 35%. And the scope of that 100% design includes engaging with Caltrans. That contract, we did a request for proposals for it as the city has to, and that's intended to close in August and will select a consultant to move that forward likely in September.
Thank you. So Autumn, would you like to invite the developer for their presentation, please?
Oh, yes, yes, absolutely. So our team representative, this is Tom Monahan.
Planning Commissioners, thank you for your time this evening. Really appreciate your attention to the project. And thank you to staff, Noah and Autumn Alder. Thank you very much. It's been a long time coming here. I'm gonna bring our architect up to speak a little bit more specifically to the project. Just a couple of things. So in the, in the City of Katati general plan housing element, densities are called out in certain locations. This location on the west side of Katati is where the density is really indicated. So our project really follows the form of the housing element in your code. So I just wanted to kind of point that out for a minute. The other thing I just wanted to point out, if we could have the next slide or two slides up. So this one's maybe a little hard to read, but what this really points out is the below-market rate or inclusionary housing that's provided with the site. And it's not only just what we call Katati Village 2, which is what's before us tonight, but, excuse me, also Katati Village 1, which is already approved. So between the two projects, those, the projects will provide 31 below-market rate units. And those are obviously very significant for the community. Those units are going to be prioritized to local Katati residents and folks that work and live in Katati. I think the city has a priority set for those local folks. So we're hoping that those are the folks that end up with those, with those units. There's a total of 13 one-bedrooms, 12 two-bedrooms and six three-bedrooms for a total of 31 units. So that's a very significant component. The other thing I wanted to mention is just as we move the project forward, we're obviously going to be going to city council. So there is a time in between this meeting and when we are before city council where we expect to clean up a few of these loose ends and questions that have been raised. So with that, I want to introduce Isaiah Stackhouse, who is our architect with Trachtenberg Associates from Berkeley, who can walk you through the project. And the rest of our team is here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Nice to be here with you all tonight. Thanks, Tom. And I'm Isaiah Stackhouse of Trachtenberg Architects. Next slide. Okay, so here's the overall site plan. Again, phase one here was approved in February, actually 2024 this year. Bachelor Lane coming through the site, the new phase two and new retail. We've really designed these to be very complimentary, phase one and phase two, where they share amenities. They have connected bike paths and connected amenities between the two. They can share the pool, the phase one can share the café, the large open green. Next slide. So here again, new retail, the new café, new central green here, buildings A and B, and parking spread throughout the project. Next slide. To get into a little more detail, building A with 59 units, building B 67 units. Again, 13 BMR units spread throughout the site to help with low-income families and helping the city meet Reno numbers. The café here opens up, you know, through the Wunnerf to this large central green where we're preserving a large central oak tree here. This central green really provides a gathering spot for the whole community. You can imagine grabbing a cup of coffee here and coming over with your kids to the playground or to have a picnic here. The Wunnerf here both provides a connection and also slows traffic as it, as it comes through here and potentially across the Bachelor Way. Next slide. Here's a landscape plan. The landscape architect is here if there are questions on that. I think the big takeaway is it's very carefully thought through, very well lushly landscaped and will provide a lot of amenity to the exterior of the project. Next slide. And then moving into the interior of the project, it's a mix of one, two and three bedroom units. These are all carefully designed, very furnishable units, all with great light and air. And again, there will be 13 below-market rate units spread across the whole range of unit types. Next slide. Here's a rendering of the new retail. Again, the look of this is meant to complement the existing retail. You can see a bit of building B in the background. Next slide. Here is a view of the central lawn commons area. You can see a bit of building A and B here. They also have lots of outdoor amenities with ground-level patios, balconies. They're highly articulated buildings with bays and balconies to create shadow play. Next slide. Here's a view of the play area within the green and the oak trees beyond. And next slide. Finally, in conclusion, the project is consistent with the city's planning goals and objectives. It's exempt from CEQA. It's consistent with the goals and objective policies to promote the creation of new housing, which will improve economic vitality, creates more housing for housing choices, it improves housing affordability. It's also consistent with a general plan, land use, community design and zoning, complies with all density bonus heights and setbacks, complies with applicable parking and bike requirements under the density bonus, and it far exceeds open space requirements. So in summary, the project sets a high standard for other projects to come. We're excited to bring it to you and here for further questions. Thanks.
Any questions for Isaac? I'm sorry.
Do you want to open for questions for the development team at this time? Or you have the option of moving on to general questions and discussion in public comment?
Do you want to go into public comment or do you want to question?
No questions, just a comment. I don't think it looks like San Quentin, I think. It's a nice looking building.
All right, at this time, we'll open it up to public comment. Monica Goodelf. She stepped outside. Carly, do we have any online comments?
Thank you, Chair Gilardi. Neil Hancock, you have the floor.
Yes, hello, Planning Commission. Thank you very much. I just liked, I sent in a letter and it looks very good. And particularly on the Wunnerf side of the discussion, I was involved quite a lot in the the commenting on the creation of it back in 2021 and 2022. One of the, and I'd like to thank the developer for incorporating parts of that in there. The intention of it really is to make it a safe space, a safer space than in past building, multifamily buildings. And I did go around a lot of the local multifamily in Katati to talk with people and just see how they actually work. So I'm wondering So I'm wondering, will there be a posted speed limit of eight miles an hour for the way that the traffic moves? And is there any design speed for that road? So we have in the, in the intention of trying to create safer spaces where vehicles and people can mix, make them much more dual purpose or multipurpose. There's the, the concept of, of, of really ensuring that vehicles and you can say, particularly delivery vehicles, larger vehicles that might enter the property with experienced drivers who do multiple entries over a week and might start speeding in these places, that there is ways of keeping that speed down. So has anything been done about really that, that speed side? I'm just making a comment here of what I've seen elsewhere is that for the speeding, you know, having some bulb outs where pedestrians are very, very visible in a couple of locations and I've identified them. There is also the concept of a highly visible speed tables. And the Press Democrat today identified some of these and talked about them for the first time for Old Redwood Highway on a main highway. Another way of encouraging safety that's maybe takes a bit of time to think about is encouraging headout parking, where the vehicle can move out and is very visible any dead spaces in front of it. Vehicle head in parking creates a lot of dead space at the back and
30 seconds.
That becomes somewhat dangerous or viewed as dangerous for small people behind the vehicle. So really the encouraging the head out parking is saying not to prohibit the head out parking. Thank you very much. Interested to follow the conversation.
Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon or dial star nine. Laura, you have the floor.
I'd urge you all to delay the vote on this. I live three blocks away on, off West Khatati and not a single person knew on West Khatati. You guys did not inform anybody other than there was a public notice in the CV, like the community voice, like three months, three weeks ago. This is not acceptable. This is the way of doing, coming in and it's, this, you have to engage the community and you have not done that with this. I have major issues. I've, it's, it's a little better than the memory care next to Old Highway that you guys planned a couple of years ago, but this is a fire trap. The, the Rancho Adobe Fire District does not have a ladder truck to fight, get those people out on the fourth floor, especially people with disabilities. That's been my issue for many years. We already had a problem with the Khatati Hotel with the sandy loam sand causing quicksand on, and there it's, we don't even know if the ground can support four stories. And this has all been done, you know, without engaging people. And people don't like this problem. They think it looks like San Quentin. And when did we go from two stories to all four stories? We, we were, you're not taking into account, and also this Wunorf, everything seems to have been done for this project, like the Wunorf. Have you ever tried it to have a pair of transit bus go down a Wunorf? It ain't happening. You can't just, these, you gotta have realistic designs and these are not. And you need to engage the community or you're just going to have anger for years. And in 1977, my parents went in front of the city council and asked for the intersection to be changed, to be corrected, West Khatati. It may not happen in my lifetime. Because the cost is going to keep going up and up and up and it's never going to catch up. And we're just going to have, this is, the project's going to cost lives because that is a very dangerous turn. It has near misses all the time. Thank you.
Chair Delardi, that'll end public comment.
Thank you. Did Monica come back in? Is there anyone else who would like to address this issue from the audience?
My name is Jose Safarte. I do live in the cottages. What she said is actually true, very, very true. It's, you're setting yourselves up for a dangerous situation, having a four story building and not having the infrastructure, the police, the fire, response teams to emergencies. Nothing's been said about that. I have concerns about that. I, concerns about the traffic. The roads are never fixed there. What, what guarantees do we have that all of those roads are going to be repaired properly? None, really. We just have a word from somebody who says they're going to be done. The buildings themselves, they're cookie cutters. You can drive anywhere up and down the middle of California and you'll find the same buildings everywhere. They're cheaply made and they'll fall apart in a few years. I don't trust them. I don't trust what's happening with this whole system. The cottages, we, we were offered a swimming pool that was never done. I don't believe what they're saying now is going to be true, that there's going to be a pool for those people. It just doesn't sit well with me. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address this topic? Seeing none. You have questions from the commission?
I think the only thing I'm thinking about, again, going back to the traffic option one and option two. And that was very helpful how Noah explained it a little more. It just looks like a riddle. It, no matter how you look at it with possible moving pieces and everything. So any additional information we could get on that and how Bachelor Lane will work to facilitate more of a through, throughway with that whole community out there, I think that would help us in the future. And if there's any option threes that are viable as, as well.
Yes, we will provide additional information as it becomes available. I also wanted to mention that I would be happy to address any questions that come up for you during the comments from the public.
Yeah, I, I know that there was a report by Rancho Adobe. Can, I can't seem to find it at this exact moment in time in these thousands of pages.
Yeah.
1,078 pages. Can you direct me where it was?
So we have conditions of approval from the Rancho Adobe Fire Protection District. Those would be conditions starting on page 1,024 of your packet, conditions 98 through 132. And so as part of the city's standard review process for development projects, we refer all projects to the Rancho Adobe Fire Protection District. They have reviewed this project in depth. And in fact, we had a sit down meeting with them to discuss circulation in the project and the Wunorf in particular. Because they're, it's a new concept for Khatati. It's a new concept for the fire district. And they have some concerns about access, obviously. And so what is presented here tonight has their stamp of approval. They have, have signed off on the width of the Wunorf, the placement of the Wunorf. You'll notice that the, the width of the Wunorf is less than the rest of the driveway through the project. And, you know, that's intentional. The, the fire department wants that wider width of 26 feet minimum in order to be able to bring their trucks up alongside a project, get their ladders up to the upper stories where the Wunorf is not adjacent to residential. And so the fire department is allowed a narrower width, which is what we would like in order to make it a more pedestrian safe zone and to slow traffic down. And so it's a 20 foot width is the travel way for a vehicle through the Wunorf. All of the, all of the conditions that you see, that however many that is, 40 or so, those are all conditions that the fire department has set, the fire district has set, that this project will need to meet in order to be occupied. And so they will be further reviewing. They review all the improvement and building permit applications as well.
Is there a specific response to the concern that ladders don't go up to the fourth floor? That they only reach up to the third story of a building is, is?
No, that's, the fire department is well aware of the, the proposed height of the project.
But there's no comments about that.
No, not at all. No. They, in fact, the, my understanding is that the, the width of the driveways is such that they need to be able to keep the truck a certain distance from the buildings in order to get the ladder up to the fourth story. So they don't have too steep a trajectory to climb. So it's definitely part of their calculus.
And I would just add, starting on packet page 190 is a full discussion of how the project would be able to be served by all aspects of public services, including public safety. So fire protection, police protection, et cetera, are, is fully analyzed and discussed as a part of the environmental analysis of the project.
The project has also been reviewed by the police department. They did not have conditions to, to attach, but they, they've, they've reviewed and don't have any concerns.
There's a comment made about the soil not being able to support a building of that height. Was there any kind of analysis done around that?
The, the project requires geotechnical analysis, which informs the, the engineering and the design of the project.
I just had a question that was triggered going back to the traffic impact study. Do you know what the delay time was that was issued for the F grade? I'm just trying to understand what those kind of differences are that bump projects into different grades.
Are you able to find that easily? Or I'll look through my version too.
Sorry to bring that up. First time.
That's okay. What is the delay time? Here we go. Okay, I have it right here. So this would be a 55 second, nearly a minute delay. Yields an F. A, a 36 second delay would yield a level of service E. So both, both levels being unacceptable for our general plan. I don't actually see what the level of service for D or the second, the delay for D is.
So D.
There it is, 27 seconds. Is that right?
This, all, all this information comes out of the Traffic Engineers Technical Manual and there's a range. So 35 to 55 seconds is D, 55 to 80 is E, and then greater than 80 seconds is an F. Is the, the delay standards from the, it's called the FTE.
An option theoretically could be allowed under the city code that could allow for almost a minute wait time.
That's correct. So the city has adopted significance standards. So what is considered a significant impact in Khatati. And we allow up to level of service D to, to be acceptable. It's worth noting, the state actually took all level of service criteria out of the environmental impact analysis of projects. So, so intersection level of service is no longer even analyzed under CEQA. CEQA looks at vehicle miles traveled. So how many new trips are being, miles are driving to that site are being created by the project. However, we still have a, you know, vested interest in ensuring that our intersections function well and people don't have significant delays. So the city still requires that. And it is a general plan standard, but it's no longer lives in the Environmental Quality Act.
Guess where, where I'm with that is if an alternative option provided a greater D, it could potentially be accepted and it could potentially allow for a minute wait per car. And that's allowed under the city code. There's not really much that.
That's correct. Up to 55 seconds.
That's per car. So if you have four cars, you, you know, you could be sitting there for.
There's, I, I would say there's nuance to that and it would be documented and identified by a traffic engineering analysis that talks about various factors, including turning movements and the flow of traffic. There's a lot that goes into these analysis, but yes.
Like, one of the things that bothers me about this, a lot of projects that come before us is the constant changing of state regulations that are tying our hands. And, you know, basically what they're doing is they're taking away not only our local control, but they're impacting the character of our community. And it doesn't seem right that Sacramento regulations should be able to use those cookie cutters to, every community has to do the same thing, which is really sad. As far as the overall project, and I, I stated this on the first project that came before us. My hope is that we can get some change to the exterior look of the project as far as colors and, and use of different materials. We got, we heard tonight and we also got it in a letter from one of our residents about the, the look of the, the building. And so I know we talked about this for the original project about adding some either accent colors using, you know, textured hardy board, shingles or whatever, just to kind of give it more of a residential look. And then the other thing that, that concerns me is the location of the playground, which is close to Alder Avenue. I'd really like to see the playground and the play lawn area flip flopped to get the playground more centrally located into that development. To me, it seems like it'd be safer and it would just make more sense that it'd be more centrally located. You know, I know, again, you know, there's comments about heights of buildings. But that, again, we are mandated basically by state regulation when we want to do affordable housing, which we desperately need. So we have to, that's a given taken. So we have to allow for taller buildings to be able to get the number of units and to get the number of low income units that we need in the, in the community. And I think, you know, I, I agree with other comments that were made here as far as traffic safety and, and parking. And I don't know, is it too late, you know, with the existing commercial building now and that they do have events where they have large amount of parking that we can require that they provide like a shuttle service to offsite parking?
Yeah, so we've learned through some of the events that have occurred on that. These events require an annual permit. And when the most recent permit was approved, we required offsite parking and shuttle service. And we didn't get nearly the amount of complaints that we did from the first event, the first year of the event. So I think, you know, as business gets going there and, and both the business and the city staff learn about how those events, how the potential to impact neighbors, we have the ability to kind of adjust. And, and the business owners there have been great to work with us and super open to any of our suggestions to help minimize those impacts.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the commission?
Yeah, just with the, the traffic option that reroutes out to West Khatati, is there any traffic calming measures being considered for Bachelor Lane?
The Bachelor Lane is, Uh, the Bachelor Lane is, um, it's been fairly designed because it's part of Katati Village One. Uh, I would say it does have some meanders in it, uh, currently, and some pedestrian crossing to facilitate people going back and forth to the community center. That, and then the turn that basically you don't have like a destination where you're, you know, it's just a long straight line because you have to turn to get there. So it has some features built into it. If the commission wants us to explore adding traffic calming, uh, features as that design gets finalized, we absolutely can do that.
Yeah, I think I would like to explore, you know, adding some traffic calming measures to that, whether it's pedestrian bulbs at the crosswalks. I think those always work really well. Um, anything else that, you know, would make sense?
One other thought, uh, comment that Neil had made about, uh, speed limits. Do we have a requirement for speed limits inside developments and is that posted?
Oh, well, actually within developments, uh, no, I'm not aware of that. Do we, do we have that? In regard to the Woonorf, we do. So there's an eight mile per hour speed limit within the Woonorf. That's part of the code. And the requirement that that, um, is a speed limit that's, uh, posted, uh, in, in the Woonorf in this project. And, um, there is, actually, if you look at the, the conditions, just more to some of Mr. Hancock's points. Condition number seven A includes a list of six, uh, additional design items that need to be addressed for the Woonorf when the project is submitted to the city for final design review. So, um, what you, what you saw up there, that design is still a little bit undefined. And there are some additional design pieces that need to be clarified for the city and things that need to be shown to us to, to, to show that the Woonorf is compliant with the code. And, um, an additional piece besides the signage is going to be a traffic calming mechanism at the entrance to the Woonorf. So that as residents, because that driveway is for residents only, it's not for, um, customers of the cafe or the other commercial, they'll be using the other parking lot. As residents are coming around, it's important to us that they be slowing down as they approach and enter the Woonorf. And so a traffic calming element will be required. The meander that's planned there in the roadway is, is part of that. There are also some bulb outs, um, that come out, extensions of, you know, the curb and the landscaping into the Woonorf, which will also help slow the traffic. There's also some parking, um, spaced within the, the Woonorf, which will also slow traffic down as well. And there's a little bit more that's needed at the entrance.
Thank you. Any additional comments, questions?
I guess I would just make one more, um, comment to, you know, consider putting the pedestrian bulbs at the crosswalks within the, the Katati Village Two, um, development. I think Neil brought that up in his comments and, you know, where those are reasonable, you know, to explore those, including those as well.
Um, I'm just looking at the playgrounds that we have here. I don't mind the playground where it is and the play lawn. I like the, the mow free kind of area that you have there as well. And I see that you have a tot lot over there on the side underneath building A, which I assume will be fenced because tots like to run. I know that last time when we were talking about Katati Village One, I just kindly asked that the playground be inclusive for all kids with disabilities. Um, and I know that now that you've got kind of two large playgrounds, if just one or the other can have those inclusive elements so that children of all abilities, um, will share accessible, et cetera, are able to be included in the community that you're creating.
John, any other thoughts, comments? Brian? With that, can I get a motion, please?
I make a motion that we pass a resolution of the planning commission for the city of Katati, recommending that the city council approve preliminary design review and a tree removal permit to allow construction of a 126 unit multifamily mixed use development on a 5.62 acre property located at 7515 Alder Avenue and 8145 Grabenstein Highway. And finding that project consistent with the Katati general plan and its environmental impact report and exempt from further environmental review under SEQA guidelines, section 15183. Then there's also those four, um, conditions that are corrections that need to be made.
Yeah. So you don't need to spell them out.
Okay.
You could say with the recommendations from staff for amendments.
Uh, move to second.
Krishna Long.
Aye.
Krishna Savage.
Aye.
Vice Chair Moffett.
Aye.
Chair Gilardi.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. On to item B, Santero Way Specific Plan Update Workshop and Sequest Scoping Meeting.
I'm going to excuse myself for this and then I will be back.
Thank you, Chair Gilardi, uh, members of the commission. Switching gears here, item, um, 8B on the agenda this evening. As we'll wait for the PowerPoint to come up. Is a scoping meeting and a workshop on the Santero Way Specific Plan Update. The EIR and the plan itself. You may be having a bit of deja vu, uh, on this item because we have had a scoping meeting on this, uh, this project before. And we'll get into a little bit of the reason why we're here again. But we previously held a scoping meeting for the EIR for the Santero Way Specific Plan on November 6th, uh, 2023. So, um, as identified in the staff report, there was, uh, some new policies coming down. Well, transit oriented community policies that proposed increased densities, uh, and commercial development within, um, essentially all areas within a half mile of, uh, high quality transit, which for Sonoma County is smart stations. Those, um, policies were coming down kind of right as we got the Santero Way Plan going. They were draft, they were conceptual, but as they've kind of solidified and we've gotten traction on our plan, staff directed the consultants to analyze the impacts of implementing these TOC policies on the remaining qualifying parcels within that half mile radius. So the proposal is to analyze the impacts of essentially bumping up those densities and allowing higher density areas, uh, for Katati is primarily along East Katati Avenue, beyond just the scope of the Santero Way Plan. But, uh, the decision to actually do that or not is proposed at a later date. We just want to give the foundation for the city council and the planning commission to be able to make that decision, should they choose to do so, because there's a timeline associated with getting it done and qualifying for One Bay Area Grant Funds, which are a significant portion of the funds that the city used to rebuild most of our public infrastructure. So most of our streets, those big projects we've been funding have come through this One Bay Area Grant Process. That process to qualify now requires cities to have transit oriented community standards in place around their high quality transit. So we're analyzing it, the impacts of doing that as a part of the EIR. So we had to change the EIR, retool that process a little bit. That requires a new scoping process, which basically allows the public to provide input on, uh, that, that future decision and the potential environmental impacts of it. That's why we're here, just of some clarification. There's a lot more detail in the staff report and our consultants will be going into it. But we'll get into the next slide. So just what we're going to talk about tonight, um, we'll do an introduction of everyone. We'll describe the project, some of the highlights and schedules, get into some of the nuts and bolts of SEQA, uh, scoping, how people who are interested to participate with us throughout this process can engage. Talk a little bit about the overall engagement plan and then have time for questions and comments. And with that, we'll go into the next slide, which is introductions. Obviously, my name is Noah House. I'm Director of Community Development here for the city. We have Eileen Mahoney, who's online via Zoom, and she will be, um, presenting some of the environmental aspects. She works for Rincon Consultants, who's the environmental consultant for the Santero Way Specific Plan. And to my left, we have Luke Lindenbusch, uh, Forleaf Incorporated, who's the lead consultant for, um, the Santero Way Specific Plan Update. Luke's going to be doing, uh, a majority of the overall presentation and running the workshop for, uh, us. But, um, I just wanted to do the introductions and give you all a little bit of background as to why we're here and kind of doing this process again. And so with that, we'll go to the next slide and it'll talk a little bit about some of this and I'll hand it over to Luke.
Great. Thank you very much and good evening commissioners. To first get into, uh, what has changed in terms of the project location, uh, you see on this map, uh, in the yellow is the plan area itself, uh, slightly expanded from the 1999 plan, uh, that was really only focused on the area to the south and west of East Katati and the smart tracks. Uh, however, as Noah mentioned, to come into compliance with the transit oriented communities or TOC policy, uh, we're including all of the parcels that'll need to be rezoned in order to retain the city's ability to, um, gain HOBAG funding. Uh, so really this is a total of 25 acres. The land use within the specific plan area has its own zoning, uh, that is specific to the specific plan. But the rest of the parcels along, uh, East Katati are, uh, general commercial. In addition, I'll just note, um, some of the zoning of those parcels. Most of the, um, the area in the original plan is that Santero Way, uh, zoning designation. Uh, however, some of the parcels, uh, that have been included are neighborhood low density as well. Uh, next slide, please. The, the parcels that are going to be included to accommodate the TOC policies are the ones, once again, uh, fronting East Katati Avenue. They're all currently developed, uh, primarily with commercial uses. Some of them are also, uh, underutilized commercial on parcels of around a half acre to an acre and a half. But most of the land is really taken up by that spot in the southwest that you see there. And that is the Oliver's Market Shopping Center. Next slide, please. Going into the updated, uh, project description, again, much of this is similar to the first scoping meeting. But really this is, uh, we're back to expand, uh, the plan boundary. Really the environmental study to add, uh, those parcels of up to four acres, uh, outside of the plan area, but within, uh, the half mile radius surrounding the smart station. Uh, I'm going to get a little bit more into this. We have two presentations. This one is really just to introduce kind of the environmental aspects of where we're at in the project, uh, and, and do the scoping part of it. But I'll be going a little bit more into the densities that are required and how that factors into our overall planning and the more general community workshop presentation. But overall, uh, the high end estimate of this, uh, is looking for planning for approximately 800 housing units and about 600,000 acres of square feet of commercial space stemming from, uh, those regional requirements. Next slide, please. Uh, the project description, uh, is, is influenced by, uh, all of the, the entities that have to, uh, be involved in, uh, the scoping for the EIR. Uh, the city of Katati serves of course as the wastewater, water and stormwater provider for the city. Uh, but the utility providers that are considered under this are also Recology, providing municipal solid waste, Sonoma Clean Power and PG&E. Uh, the build out estimate is looking at eight to 15 years and completion in 2040. This is standard for specific plans, uh, which generally have a maximum shelf life around 15 to 20 years. Next slide. Just going a little bit into, uh, what's happened and what is, uh, going to be happening through the project for the rest of the year. Uh, you see in the schedule on the right that, uh, most of the items are done or started. Uh, we've really been moving ahead since we started this last year. Including with the formation and, and meetings of the technical advisory committee and our community advisory committee as well. Uh, doing community engagement, uh, workshops such as this. Uh, and really moving forward with a public review draft in the fall, uh, and adoption of the plan, uh, in the winter of this year. So with that, uh, I will pass it off to Eileen Mahoney with Rincon to get into the SEQA, uh, component of, uh, the scoping meeting.
Thank you, Luke, and good evening commissioners. As mentioned earlier, my name is Eileen Mahoney with Rincon Consultants. And I'm overseeing the environmental review for the project. I'm going to go over some background about the environmental review process, explain the purpose behind this particular meeting and briefly outline the scope of the document. So the reason we're doing this analysis is because of the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA. SEQA was passed in 1970 and is at its core all about public disclosure and input. It requires that we analyze the environmental impacts of a project and take those into consideration before making a decision on the project. We do this, we do that through preparing environmental review documents, including environmental impact reports or EIRs, which is what we were doing here. In addition to simply disclosing the anticipated environmental impacts, SEQA also requires that we seek to minimize, reduce or avoid those impacts through what are called mitigation measures. We also prepare and adopt a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, which typically takes the form of a detailed table of requirements and who is responsible for seeing them out. Next slide. So this slide provides an overview of the SEQA review process for an environmental impact report. The first step is the circulation of a notice of preparation during which time the lead agency solicits input on the content of the draft EIR. A notice of preparation for this project was published in October last year with a subsequent notice of preparation published in July, on July 19th, 2024, to disclose the change in the project footprint. The purpose of this meeting is to collect comments on the EIR content, particularly as it relates to the new project parcels. Next, a draft EIR will be prepared and then published. During the 45 day draft EIR review period, comments on the adequacy of the draft are solicited. Then a final EIR is prepared, including responses to comments on the draft errata noting any changes to the draft and a mitigation monitoring program. Once the final EIR is complete, of responsible agencies will consider the EIR and the lead agency will make a decision on the project. Next slide. So we are here today to receive scoping comments. Scoping invites public input on the environmental analysis that will be conducted. Scoping comments can suggest topic areas to address, identify issues of concern, suggest potential alternatives to the project and/or propose mitigation measures. If you would like to provide detailed comments, we encourage you to do so in writing. Next slide. SEQA requires an analysis of 20 separate issue areas, which are listed on this slide. For a full list of the checklist questions that will be addressed, please refer to the SEQA guidelines. Next slide. Once the draft EIR is available, it will follow the structure shown here. There will be an introduction and executive summary, which is a great place to look to get a snapshot of the issue areas, impacts and mitigation measures required. There will be a detailed description of the project. And then the meat of the EIR will be the environmental impact analysis. For each issue area on the previous slide, we have a, we'll have a standalone chapter that includes a setting section laying out the physical environment and regulations relevant to that, that issue. An analysis of project impacts and identification of mitigation measures where required. These sections will include many details not found in the executive summary. Another key section of the EIR is the alternatives chapter, which will include a required no project alternative and other bill alternatives intended to reduce or eliminate significant effects of the project while still achieving most of the basic project objectives. Other SEQA required sections such as significant irreversible effects and growth inducement will also be covered. Next slide. So we're still at the beginning of this process and just embarking on the analysis. And what we want from the public is input on the scope of the environmental document, which could be a key environmental issue you think should be considered or an alternative or a mitigation measure that you'd like to see included. Please note that we are not asking for comments on the specific plan itself. Right now, we are asking for comments on the environmental analysis to be conducted. Comments are due on August 19th and there are two ways to submit written comments by snail mail or email to the addresses shown here. The third option is to provide verbal comments now and we will take detailed notes and summarize all comments in the EIR. Thank you, and I'll turn it back over to Luke.
Thank you. Uh, with that, we can turn it over to the commission for any questions on the scoping component.
We have any questions? There any questions from the public? CNN, Carla, do we have any questions online?
Thank you, Chair Gilardi. There are no public comments at this time.
Thank you.
Great. So now Luke is going to get into more of the, kind of the Santero Way, uh, specific plan update portion of the presentation. Uh, it'll get into a little bit more details on to where we are with that and where we're headed. Again, today with the scoping element was kind of a housekeeping issue. Not a lot has changed, uh, in the analysis, except those additional parcels that were highlighted in blue were added to the scope of potential environmental impacts.
Great. Thank you, Noah. I'm just getting right into the presentation here on the next slide deck. Uh, once again, my name's Luke Lindenbusch. I'm a supervising planner with Forleaf. Uh, I'm the consulting team project manager, uh, for the Santero Way Specific Plan Update. Uh, so on the next slide, I'll just go into the overview of what exactly is being updated. The plan was first adopted in 2001 and had a pretty different, uh, understanding of. The plan was first adopted in 2001 and had a pretty different understanding of how this area would develop out and a different understanding of what economic forces would be at play to develop the area. It was originally anticipated as being very predominantly populated by office commercial. And obviously, the market has changed. There's much more demand for housing over the last quarter century. So ultimately, the way that the plan was structured in anticipating around 300 residential units and 300,000 square feet of office commercial needs to be rethought. So around 100 housing units have been built since the plan was adopted with about 98 units in the development pipeline. That's the Catati Station Project. So really, this is an opportunity for us to pivot, have a plan that is more with the times, more in concert with some regulatory mandates, the TOC policy, which I'll get into. And also to be able to deal with some of the challenges over the last quarter century that have resulted in more vacant parcels, not just market forces, but also some kind of prescriptive standards in the last plan that can allow for more flexibility for development in the area moving forward. Next slide, going into what is a specific plan. The really, the straightforward answer is that a general plan is more general and a specific plan is more specific. But the general plan really deals comprehensively with the city as a whole, whereas a specific plan looks at a specific area and is really more focused on implementation than most other plans are. Upcoming projects in the plan area have to follow the detailed rules that are laid out within the specific plan. And it's essentially like a mini general plan for a specific area. Much like general plans, specific plans are also subject to state law and regional policy requirements that are a little bit different for these transit oriented development plans. On the next slide, we'll see the plan area. Once again, this is really just barely expanded from the original 2001 plan that was focused south of East Catati and west of the Smart Station. And you can see from this aerial that about a third to half of the land has been developed with townhomes, live work units, and much of the rest of the remaining land is vacant with the exception of the Smart Station in the northeast corner there. There's also been the addition of a couple of parcels with some potential for development that are very close to the station area. The parcel that you see at the northeast there that's largely vacant is currently neighborhood low. That's a couple of acre parcel for a single family home. There's also some more industrial commercial on the north side of East Catati, including a mini storage facility and a glass shop that are included with the, within the plan as well. So those existing uses will be able to be retained, but it just opens up the option for those property owners to develop in the future. Moving into the next slide, we'll go into an image that you've seen from the scoping meeting. That's really looking at commercial and underutilized residential parcels along East Catati Avenue. And the reason why we were really interested in bringing this into this process as it's happening now is to make sure that everything can be covered under this EIR. And so when these TOC policies go into effect in 2026, the city doesn't have to go back out, do another EIR, do another planning process. We're already here. It's not that much work to really just be looking at this in the environmental document. So we're really making sure that we can codify these standards and position the city for future development, for future sites in the seventh cycle housing element in 2031. So really trying to make sure that this, this plan is as cohesive and considerate of the surrounding context as possible. Next slide. Really going into some, what the TOC requirements are. So it is, there's a draft policy that's going to be finalized by around the end of this year. So Catati is really one of the early adopters of this plan. But the draft policy is what the policy is going to be. And it's, as Noah mentioned, really the implementation of the regional general plan, Plan Area 2050, to make sure that transit oriented development can be supported at densities that are in concert with regional planning goals. These are going to be finalized by 2026 and that's when the condition of OABAG funding is going to go into effect. But really here, I want to focus on the four core policy areas that form the parameters for the specific plan and some of the policy implications that might make this a little bit of a different specific plan than you'd otherwise be used to seeing. The first ones really has to do with the minimum densities for residential and commercial development. And I'm going to get into that in a little bit more detail, but basically that means for parcels, both residential and commercial within the half mile radius. There, they have to be, have a minimum density of at least 25 units an acre and a maximum of at least 35 units an acre. So that's the range for the tier four or regional commuter rail within the Bay Area. And those are the ones that we're implementing through this plan. Yeah, sure.
Same question. And by adopting these policies, it, it sets the city up for the OABAG funding, is that correct?
Yeah. So in order for us to qualify for OABAG funds, we have to have these policies in place. As we've gone through the outreach effort with the Santero Plan, we've essentially told folks that we think these policies make sense for Santero neighborhood because it's a, I mean, it is a transit oriented community, right? It's, it's literally the neighborhood built around the train station. However, as we started looking at what the regional government thinks as that, what that half, what that neighborhood really means, it's a half mile radius. And so we're essentially breaking up the process to upzone parcels to meet these TOC policies. We've communicated clearly to the residents and business owners in the Santero neighborhood. Hey, this is what we think we need to do. What's your input on it? How do you want us to, to move forward with that in a way that works for you? We have not done that for the remainder of the area down East Catati Avenue. And Rona Park hasn't done it frankly, for all the residents that are in Rona Park that are also subject to this. So we're essentially laying the foundation through the SEQA analysis to allow the future decision to be made for the city, but limited, limiting the proposed changes to the actual on the ground rules, zoning and land use to just that Santero Way neighborhood because we've been having those conversations with them and they're aware of it. But we don't want to paint ourselves into a corner and not be able to do it in the future to be able to qualify for those OABAG grant funds.
Okay. Yeah, sorry for interrupting you.
So and then clarification. We're expanding the area to include those other commercial properties. Does that change any of our current notifications that we have to do with Santero Way? Or would that only be if projects came up involving those commercial properties?
Yes, that's a great point. So we're, we're going to notice everyone to meet the rules for including them in the environmental analysis. But we're trying to very clearly say, you're not being included in the Santero Way specific plan right now. That'll be a future effort. We're going to meet with those folks directly, engage with those property owners directly, have the same type of discussions we're having with Santero residents and business owners with those property owners who are those, on those blue, blue highlighted parcels, separate from this.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I think it's also important to note as well, since I didn't mention this before, why is this focused just on commercial parcels and, you know, some of them within the plan area? This is really, these standards have to be applied to vacant parcels or occupied commercial or mixed use parcels. So the city has the choice to exempt existing single family and multifamily dwellings. The vast majority of the half mile radius is going to be exempted from this upzoning. So really just focused on the vacant, the commercial and the underutilized parcels. In addition, moving into the other policy areas, the TOC policy, back to the previous slide though. The affordable housing, production, preservation and protection policies are another facet that needs to be implemented. The city is mostly in compliance on these, just by virtue of having, having good and strong housing policy. But those are under consideration as well on a citywide basis going into 2026. But really, the focus of the specific plan is, is in large part on these last two, which is parking management and the rules for TOC that recognize the need for accessible parking, parking standards, potential imposition of parking maximums, or at least consideration of that in the plan. And transit station access, making sure that it can be under the mobility hub framework, as the regional government has called it, to make sure that train stations can be accessible to people by bike, that they can be accessible to people with disabilities and that can be accessible to transit riders as well. So those will be features of the plan that you'll see in addition. And finally, a requirement, once again, just that this is a required part of station area specific plans in order to receive that project and grant funding through OABAG. Next slide, please. This is really just restating the TOC approach that within the plan area, we're really focused on doing the comprehensive specific plan within the specific plan area because that's the process that we've been moving forward with for some months now. But really making sure that we can preemptively address these TOC requirements and the other parcels. Next slide. I want to go into some of the community input because we've had a great series of community advisory committees and prior workshops with a strong group with our community advisory committee, with some input on, on key issues that we, that we got into over the course of the spring. One of those being land use. In addition to, you know, just implementing these requirements, there's much more to the specific plan on that. It's actually, you know, what, what are we going to allow here? What standards for land use do we want to require to make sure that it can catalyze development and also be an area that's conducive to the existing residents and business owners? Really, a lot of the community input focused on a vision of the depot being a hub instead of just, you know, kind of a midpoint between Sonoma State and downtown Catati, really making it an area that can be as a civic opportunities. Looking into some other input, really the vision for the East Catati corridor as something that Santero Way can stem from, looking at mixed use down East Catati. And there was a strong preference for more 100% residential as you get down into the Santero Way cul-de-sac. A key feature of the Santero Way cul-de-sac is that it's one way in, one way out. And there's a lot of considerations about parking, about traffic from residents within the neighborhood. And the consensus was generally that if you put a bunch of businesses at the very end, then there's going to be more traffic up and down Santero Way. There's also, there was a preference expressed for smaller businesses that would generate more foot traffic within the area, things like cafes, farm markets. And one of the phrases that came up with the CAC was live work play, really looking at an area that can be dynamic and support a variety of community needs. Next slide. A specific plan also establishes design preferences. It can, if it's in a jurisdiction that has objective design and development standards, as the City of Catati does, it can apply those standards or have specific plan standards that are in compliance with the objective design and development standards, but can also address the more context specific desires of the community. And in asking the CAC and local residents about what they wanted to see in design, there were some differing perspectives on whether the station area should have the craftsman character that the city has adopted citywide for its objective design and development standards, or if it should take a more contemporary look. Drawing on some of the existing context in the area with more metallic features, like some of the warehouses and light industrial within the area. And really overall, quality was the unifying top priority. So we'll make sure that it's consistent with the objective design and development standards of the city. But the Santero Way specific plan will have standards that are specific to the area to reflect that. In addition, in reflection of the existing developments within the area, there was a lot of appreciation for the existing courtyards and pocket parks that really had made it a livable neighborhood. Moving into the next slide. Some community input that we received on circulation, less wonkily known as transportation. There's a requirement for this plan because Santero is a one way in, one way out cul-de-sac, that there is an emergency evacuation route. And there have been a couple of options that we've pursued, looking at what, what is going to be able to, what, what's going to be able to work for the area because there's essentially, it's, it's at the edge of the city limits of Catati. So much of the project area is surrounded by the City of Rona Park. Going to the east, an evacuation route would have to cross Smart Tracks, which also poses some infrastructural challenges. So all of that is under consideration, but really the community input was indicated that bike and pet access in addition to the EVA would be ideal at the end of Santero Way, crossing into the M section of Rona Park. So we're exploring opportunities to do that within the plan and also looking at alternatives. In addition to that route through Santero Way, street safety on East Catati came up a lot in, in our surveys and in our conversations with residents in the CAC, particularly on East Catati. Not so much concerned that there are people speeding up and down Santero Way, but ultimately that the neighborhood as a whole could be better connected, more safe, especially at night through, you know, lighting and pedestrian improvements that would create a safer environment for people to move. In addition, there's substantial concern and has been throughout the project around the parking issues on Santero Way. Street parking is in high demand. There's no overnight street parking on Santero Way. And there's been concern that intensified development may exacerbate some of those existing issues. So those are some of the pieces that we're looking at of the plan as well. In addition, in part in compliance with the TOC rules, but also just based on community feedback, we're looking at innovative approaches to parking, things like shared vehicle parking, loading zones for, for commercial development. There was also input that on Santero Way itself, a reduced speed limit might be something worth exploring on the basis of the fact that it's relatively narrow and, and it is a one way in, one way out cul-de-sac. So moving into the next slide. This really illustrates some of the key issues with parking. This is a common sight on Santero Way that there's a scarcity of parking. So you can imagine that, you know, if there were additional businesses within the plan area, that that would need to be accounted for. There's also the regulatory challenge with, with that in mind, in the other hand, we have Assembly Bill 2097, which a couple of years ago mandated that jurisdictions cannot impose parking minimums within a half mile of transit. So on, on one hand, we have the residents saying we need more parking. And on the other hand, we just don't have the policy lever to require developers to include parking. So we're getting creative with what we can do with public agency owned land, with street standards to make sure that both of those competing and conflicting realities can, can have some cohesion. Moving into the next slide, station access. This is one I mentioned a little bit before in terms of making sure that it is accessible to multimodal people, people moving through bike, pedestrian. Essentially, this is going to be part of the plan that, and in some areas, looking to make sure that connectivity is prioritized, that it's consistent with the city's active transportation plan. But some of the requirements within the policy framework of TOC are already being done. For example, there's a requirement the stations have bike lockers. This is something that the city already has. So we're looking at the existing context and also interested in receiving input from the commission and public on areas where our station accessibility can be enhanced. Another key issue moving into the next slide is the depot use. So the Catati Station Depot was built in 2017 and is a city owned building. It, for the most part since 2017, due to a number of factors, including the pandemic, has mostly not been utilized to the highest degree. So we've really used this process as a way to get input from the community on what they want the depot to be used for and how it can be a catalyst in, in helping create a more vibrant community for the Santero Way specific plan area. This started in a three month period where my shop at Fourleaf had our office in the station depot. We rented it from the city, used it as a way to have conversations with residents, spend more time in the area, really embed ourselves within the plan area. So we aren't just planning conceptually from some office somewhere else, but really within the community and able to understand some of the challenges and opportunities within the plan area. So that was one of our goals to activate the space. But from here, from there, we just kind of started thinking about all of the different ways in which the city could better utilize the depot and opened that question up to the community. So in the next slide, I have a list, long list, probably the longest survey question I've ever put in a survey. But there's really a lot of ideas that we had heard in, in the first six months or so of this process for some of the things that the depot could be used for. And these are just some of the, the ideas that have come up. And this is also in our second community survey that's out now. Some of them are more civically oriented. Some of them aren't at all. And we, you know, would be just an opportunity to have a business or other community service that the city could rent out. gain some revenue for the city in a couple of different ways. But really, just want to, as long as this list may be, view this as a starting point for ideas for how that station depot can best be utilized and exist within the context of the neighborhood. So moving into the next slide, just a summary of community engagement. Again, we have the Station Depot pop-up office and the Community Advisory Committee that really formed the cornerstone of our community engagement plan over the winter. In addition to neighborhood and stakeholder engagement that's been ongoing throughout the course of the plan. Here on the screen, you have two QR codes for the survey number two that really is focused on these land use and transportation topics. That'll be closing within the next couple of weeks, but we've gotten a pretty strong response in addition to our first survey, getting a sense of the community's priorities for the area. So with that, moving into the next slide, really just looking at the next steps. We're looking to wrap up this project by the end of the year. So we're here, we're continuing to consult with the Technical Advisory Committee and engage with the community. Moving into the draft specific plan, which will be published for public review in the fall, moving into specific plan adoption with the Planning Commission and City Council in December. So with that, I'll open it up to the Commission and Public for discussion. Thank you. You have questions?
Yeah, with the the depot use, when you were in that office?
I was, yes.
Yeah. What were your kind of personal takeaways? Or what did you see? You know, what's your opinion on what you see being beneficial there?
Yeah, I mean, I think just sort of on a base level, you know, more public information. There's a bulletin board that's there that the city utilizes for public notices. But I think just ultimately helping people understand what the building is, having, you know, train schedules posted on decals on the windows, things like that that really make it something that is more accessible, other than just sort of, you know, looking like a kind of mysterious vacant building. We had events there, whether it was the CAC or with with my firm, I also am the project manager for the Napa-Sonoma Regional Planning Collaborative. So we held our regional housing fair there last December. And a lot of the people who are coming through, whether they were neighbors in the direct area or people who are coming from out of town, was wow, what a great building. I had no idea this existed, even though I've gotten on and off this train station so many times. So I think to have kind of a long-winded answer to your question, Commissioner, I think really anything in there could be successful. It was also really illuminating in our time there, just to sort of see the demographic of of who was using the station. I think, you know, sometimes we can have an idea of sort of what a train commuter looks like. And everyone on my staff was surprised by how many of the commuters were students, how often school buses were coming to the train station. So I think that's that kind of scratches the surface, but there were a lot of observations during our time there that really helped us better understand the area.
What's this word? That is word footage?
It's about 1,500 square feet.
And the city owns it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's owned by the city and we just kind of building on some of the momentum. We just included the rental rates. We didn't have a rental, a facility rental specific to the depot building like we do for a Cattati room and some of our other buildings. And so we've now, the City Council just adopted that, I think in May. And the idea is for city staff to start to market that as an option for business pop-ups. So we don't want to have it be available similar to the Cattati room. We want it to almost be like a a commercial facility rental that someone could have for a temporary use, an event, those types of things. And we're just now starting to build out our marketing plan to try to get that out to the business community.
Kind of see that be more of a as the city kind of see that be more of a temporary use building instead of putting in like a long-term tenant there?
Oh, so that we would love to have a long-term tenant there. It was listed for lease with a commercial real estate agent and we just haven't gotten the, you know, no one was committed to a lease. I think some of the issues are, you know, there's no parking there that's technically dedicated to it. The the gravel lot gets used and it kind of serves it, but it's not, it doesn't have any dedicated parking. And then also questions about the long-term land use because we had just started the specific plan when we had that advertised with the real estate agent. So that left some kind of questions in people's mind for, you know, their long-term goals as a business. But as as some of these questions get solidified, I think there absolutely is opportunity to get a long-term tenant there.
Yeah. And just kind of the preliminary results of the survey, there's there's pretty overwhelming support for cafe. That's kind of clear number one, just based on, you know, a little bit of a walk to the Starbucks in the in the Oliver's Shopping Center and, you know, not too many restaurants in the area. So.
Yeah. Is there a way to highlight that kind of use there? I guess you said the city wasn't getting much interest anyway. So I guess anything would have been preferable to vacant, but.
Yeah. So that's our goal is to allow kind of with the with the land use updates from the specific plan, allow a broad range of uses that implement the majority of of kind of requests we got from the residents and and folks who live in the area, like what they'd like to see. And then make that use a by right use. So it's easy for someone to move in, should they choose to do so. So this gets back to kind of the, do you require a use permit or a minor use permit, or you just allow the use? You know, when somebody is talking, they come to our counter and say, hey, I want to start a business at this location. And we have to say, use permits, you know, $5,000 and it's a five-month process to get your question answered of can you open up there versus, oh, I can give you a business license right now. It it really factors into their decision. So from my standpoint, a strong way for a city to prioritize certain uses or certain businesses in certain areas is to make it by right and do the environmental analysis to understand the impacts of that, set the stage for what you need to address it, such as parking, utility services, those types of things, address that proactively. And then once a business wants to move in there that fits those criteria, you can just say yes.
Yeah. So that would be the depot, but then potentially developing the property as well, making those by right, certain uses.
Correct. That's exactly right.
Yeah. Yeah. So the use permit in Cattati is only 5,000?
That's right.
10,000 in Santa Rosa.
No, I was gonna say, we're one of the least affordable, or the, I'm sorry, least expensive use permit processes, but yeah.
Yeah, that's a minor use permit. It's 10,000. Yeah, I would love to see as many of these uses be incorporated by right in the property if we're really trying to get people in there. Because when you have to go through the use permit process, it's very costly, especially if you're paying rent to get that approval. So as much that we can incorporate, these by right would be amazing to kind of spur that development and that activity in the area. Support that.
Yeah, I'd second that. You know, I know that I love when I'm waiting for the train in Petaluma that I can jump into the Petaluma muse, art museum. It's just something to do while I'm waiting for the train. And so I think something like that, add a cafe or coffee cart would just add a great vibe. But really, anything is better than empty. Question about the gravel lot right there in front. Is that city-owned or Smart Train owned?
It's city-owned.
Is there plans or are there going to be incorporated plans to do anything with that?
So the city had that listed for sale. We had a contract signed with a developer. Unfortunately, that developer passed away during that process. And so it's actually still technically listed for sale. There's still a real estate agent sign on it. But again, similar to the depot building, as we're kind of going through this change in the land use, the the rules about what can go there. Folks who are interested in, you know, developing from scratch are are most likely going to wait until this process gets completed. And I will say, we have a master plan developer who's looking at all of the vacant land in Santero and is interested in moving forward with the project. They've been very patient and working with us to get this project complete. If we do, or once we do complete this, if they do choose to pursue development, they would be interested in purchasing that property for the city, from the city for their master plan.
And parking has always been a big issue over there. Do you feel that the current residents over there thoroughly understand the the rules from the state and the impacts of future development and how there could be less parking than we would desire? But that's not our choice?
So I would say that was one of the key goals that I had in engaging with the community and residents is letting them know basically, we cannot require any parking for new development in transit areas. Even if we didn't do this plan process, that law is in place and we can't. So I was as transparent as possible and as clear as possible in explaining that. We had 12, 12 members, I believe, on the CAC Community Advisory Committee. And I think eight of them were residents or property owners, or I think eight of them were residents and I think 10 of them were property owners total for that area. So they heard loud and clear. Some of them were kind of in leadership positions of the HOA. Currently, that that is the HOA for those residential developments there. We had one resident from Windmill Farms. She said their HOA is less kind of engaged. But part of the reason for including them, which I will say, we included everyone who applied. So we really just wanted to get as variety, as much variety as possible. One of the key members or goals for my including HOA members was to have them disseminate information to the rest of the residents. I can't speak to how well that was done. We will be clearly communicating that every chance we get through engagement. I think we've done a good job so far, but I'm sure there are some people who aren't aware of that.
It's always best to try to. I know even no matter how much outreach you do, there's always going to be those naysayers that say, you know, we don't know anything about this and it's all your fault. And so. Any other questions, comments?
When you, have you had conversations about proposals with that, you know, that that one developer that's looking at the whole property? Do they talk about parking? Like, does that come up in those conversations?
Absolutely. So they're very supportive of kind of trying to meet, you know, one thing, it's interesting is, you know, we can't require a parking minimum, but nobody's going to build a residential project and not provide parking. They're interested, I believe, in providing parking that's around the density bonus numbers, maybe a couple of spaces lower, a couple of spaces higher. I can't remember. But with retail, they're interested in in having a fairly substantial retail component as well. And with retail, the financing mechanism requires certain amounts of parking because the lenders tie the ability to park there to the ability to get in and and spend money at that business. And so we're, as Luke mentioned, we're really trying to find creative ways to get more parking into Santerana while also meeting the state expectations for not requiring it.
Yeah, I think you kind of touched on that. My thinking was that, you know, the state has those requirements, but market forces kind of dictate other things. And so, you know, the fear of not having any parking, I think, can be overblown. And hopefully that's communicated to the residents as well.
And I would add, some of the things we're exploring is like the ability to construct a parking garage on the public's, the public parking lot. So essentially double the amount of parking that's there that then can serve any new commercial or any new significant commercial abilities, or I mean, uses that are trying to build there. And we're talking to essentially who's pushing this, the TOC. So it's ABAG MTC, the regional government, about, you know, if that meets their kind of criteria for TOC, we don't see why it wouldn't because getting people the ability to park next to the station is how you're going to get them to use the station and commute on it, especially folks in in communities like ours where a lot of people live, you know, in rural areas, they could park there, it could save a lot of commuting time. But we don't have a definitive answer on that yet. So we're continuing to kind of push on all of those. And I don't know if you have anything to add on that.
Yeah, I think ultimately, I mean, ABAG MTC is understanding of the fact that this is, as under their terminology, a tier four commuter rail station. It's not like, you know, a Bart Station in Berkeley, or, you know, you've Campbell, or, you know, anywhere else in sort of the inner Bay Area. You know, and I just told them, hey, I live in Sebastopol. This is my station. There's, there's no bus I can take. There's no comfortable bike ride I could take to get to this station. I'm going to drive there and park if I'm going to take the train. And I think there's, having that nuance to approach is something that I think our regional partners are aware of, that this is a regional station that serves many more people than just within the plan area or even the half-mile radius. So I think in general, we have that understanding.
That's it for me. Thanks.
Nathan? Well, thank you, Luke. We appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Reports by staff.
Oh, Chair Delarney, we have a public comment on Zoom.
I'm sorry.
Laura, you have the floor?
Hi, you were too fast earlier. I'm feeling like this is there's all of Rona Park coming in with a SOMO development and everything. And it seems like this is all your island pretending that all this thousands of houses are not coming in in Rona Park on East Cattati. I just, there just seems to be, you can't just put all, both you guys in Cattati and Rona Park, you know, put the impact on East Cattati Avenue. That's just my thought. The other thing, okay. Not everybody can ride a bike, such as me, who is physically disabled. And your bus system sucks. The, it goes one way, Route 10 goes once an hour, one way to Sonoma State, ends at 5 o'clock, is only weekdays. Oh, no, no, it's on the weekend, too. Sorry. It's two hours to the hub. For seven years, since the Smart Train came, we've been waiting for better bus routes and that's not come. And it if you guys need have transit-oriented community and all this, you also have to plan a much better one, including access for us all over, all the way over on the west side. Like, I'd have to take paratransit to go to the train, train station because I'm three-fourths of a mile from a bus stop. And or here on the west side. The other thing is, we've also been waiting for that depot depot for seven years, at least seven years, to be open for simple things like using the bathroom. Who says it has to have a retail use? You know, we just have to have some way of using it as practicality. It shouldn't be a money profit thing for the city. So I just wanted to bring up those things. And thank you. Bye.
Chair Delarney, that'll end in public comment.
Thank you, Chair Delarney. Just briefly, just for an update on Bike Share. So, long time coming, but the city has a contract with a new provider for electric bicycles. We had previous contracts, regional group, Marin and Sonoma County, working with Sonoma County Transit Authority. Unfortunately, they ended up going bankrupt before that project could get fully rolled out. However, we are now working with Drop Mobility and we anticipate getting those bikes rolled out in September. So right now, Smart, at the Smart Station, at the downtown, next to the bus stop, right on Old Redmond Highway, and at the corner of La Salle and East Cattati Avenue, on this, actually, in the Republic Right-Away adjacent to Oliver's, kind of right in front of Jaded Toad, our three locations. Oh, thank you, sir. I'm sorry. I didn't wait for Commissioner Savage to return. But I'm just, I'm giving an update on Bike Share. And so we anticipate bikes rolling out in September, being available for use. And in addition to the three stops in Cattati, there's also additional Bike Share at Sonoma State, Sommo Village, and other locations in Rona Park. So the idea will be you can grab a bike, go and park it. I think you return it to these places, but they, if you don't, I think it gets I think you return it to these places, but they, if you don't, I think it gets picked up, charged and returned to these places on a daily basis. And you have an app similar to like the scooters that are kind of in a lot of different communities. And so we're really excited to finally get that going. And I believe that's a two year pilot program. But it should help with kind of some of the mobility issues that that have been mentioned with folks being able to get kind of that, they call it the last mile, you know, from transit to some of these other locations.
Real quick on that, is there ability to add, I guess what I'm thinking is if the hotel opens up, could they add a location down there as well?
That's a good question. You know, I'm not sure if that's folded in with this two year pilot program, but if it's successful, I'm sure that they could get added. Because, you know, at that point, then they'll be formalizing and looking for additional ways to get users of the bicycles to, to and from the destination spots.
When's the anticipated date for that to roll out?
I don't have the exact date, but it's in September. So next month. Oh, yeah. So I'm sorry. So at the Smart Station, at the corner of LaSalle and East Katati Avenue, so in front of the Jaded Toad, right there in the Public Right Of Way. And then Old Redwood Highway and East Katati Avenue, where the bus stop is, next to Katati Park or the name of the park with the, not La Plaza, but with the landscaped with Chief Katati. Just right there, that bus stop. Yeah, right by Spankies, exactly. So the, the switching gears, the ordinance work that the planning commission recommended to the city council. Plex Housing Density Bonus and the Plan Development rezonings are all moving forward. Plex Housing is scheduled to go to the city council, I believe, at their next meeting. And that'll be for, I believe it's the second reading, so that's likely to get adopted and go into place 30 days after that second reading. The Density Bonus ordinance is going at the second meeting in August, so then that should be in effect in September. And then as a part of the Plan Development rezoning, the commission voiced concerns of, of, you know, individual property owners being noticed that their properties are being changed. The council had those same concerns. And they asked staff to go out and send direct mailers to about eight parcels that the council thought may have the potential to maybe didn't get noticed fully or maybe weren't aware of the changes. And so we've done that noticing. We are going to be getting input from those property owners and then bringing that back to the city council for them to make their final vote on which parcels to include. But just know that'll be in September. But so that work is moving forward.
Just to kind of refresh my memory, that, that's kind of driven by state law, right? Where you're aligning the zoning code with the general plan or is that not necessarily?
And so it was a combination of things. So some of the, the work we did was in response to state law. So the objective design standards for the Plex Housing, trying to get those in place, because that's the only thing we can now apply to affect the design of projects is these objective standards. But then the Plan Development changes were a combination of some of the things we committed to in the housing element to remove governmental constraints. So like the issue we had with the CV Katati Village One development, where the zoning was inconsistent, but it was on us to fix it. We're proactively doing that, but then also we took a look at all of our zoning and general plan. And anywhere where they were not in alignment, we wanted to kind of finish the work of the general plan by getting that zoning in place to implement it, which technically is required, but some cities kind of kicked the can to do it and we were one of them.
Question, of those eight parcels that were going to be noticed, did they include the parcels that Commissioner Long and I identified as needing to be noticed, specifically the ones between Valparaiso and Cypress?
They did.
And do the owners have any recourse if they disagree?
So that's a great question. So from the staff standpoint, the general plan is, the decision was made on that. So however, one of the things that staff is putting together is because some of the state law changes have been made to where we can't downzone properties. So if residential density is at X units per acre, we're no longer allowed to reduce that density without finding an opportunity to upzone other places. So we, we can't have a, it's zero net loss in our overall residential capacity in the city. So if we're going to downzone one area of town in response to maybe those people not being included or, you know, maybe not being thought to be a good decision now, we have to find an area to make up those units somewhere else. This TOC policy implementation is an opportunity, because we're going to be increasing allowable residential density on some parcels on East Katati Avenue. Is an opportunity to kind of reduce densities or, or kind of reverse those decisions, should the council direct us to do so. So we're, we're looking for options to address that, provide recourse if people say, hey, I wasn't included and I didn't know that that happened. But there'll have to be a future action. All right. And then just lastly, we've scheduled the housing fair. So one of the things we committed to in the housing element is an annual housing fair. This year's is going to be really focused primarily on people who are interested in information on affordable housing and low income housing opportunities. And then also on landlord tenant rights. We get a fair amount of calls on, you know, challenges between landlords and tenants on both sides. And so one of the things we want to do is provide an opportunity for either tenants or property owners who have tenants to learn about the laws that govern that relationship, provide resources to them. So legal aid of Sonoma County, some of the arbitrary option or arbitration options that are available, should they have disagreements, those types of things. And that is September 14th. And it's going to be at the Rona Park Katati Library. So we're partnering with Rona Park to, just it made sense to us to try to share resources and have it the library. And we're going to have a food truck and try to have some other fun things available for, to just make it more attractive and appealing to a broad variety of people. We're thinking right now 11 to 2. Absolutely. So we're just, the marketing is going to start this week. Yeah. So we'll have a flyer. I'm looking at Eli because he's helping with that. But we're going to have a flyer going out, social media blasts, both ourselves and Rona Park and the library, all doing a kind of a sustained effort to get that word out. So just save the date right now, September 14th, 11 to 2.
Thank you. Planning Commission reports, right? No? Saturday, Sunday. Sunday, I heard that a developer did a presentation to the city council regarding the property across the street from the fire department. The, for a low income housing project, including floor, street level, all handicapped accessible units. Do you have any additional information on that?
I'm sorry, I should have included that, yes. So the city has engaged in what's called an exclusive negotiating agreement. So it's the first step to partner with the developer to develop 120 East Katati Avenue. So that's the parcel that we purchased. Planning Commission was involved in reviewing and making recommendations on that. We did RFQ to get qualifications. We were able to find a developer who seems to be an excellent fit, very sophisticated, well funded and kind of thoughtful from, from our perspective so far. So the city council approved that exclusive negotiating agreement. They're called Free Bird Development. Robin Zimbler is their, their principal's name, and she's been great to work with so far. And we're really excited to try to move forward with what will likely be 100% affordable housing project on that site. Robin is very interested in doing a fair amount of engagement before any designs are really done. So their response to qualifications had a conceptual kind of floor plan. But she doesn't want to kind of commit to anything until she gets a chance to hear from the neighboring residents. And so we're going to get that schedule going. And it's likely to include a meeting with the planning commission and city council, and it's going to go through this fall and winter. We're going to try to tie it up by the end of January, so then she can submit and get a development project underway.
I watched the playback of her presentation to the city council and it was a very thoughtful presentation. And I, I think, you know, it, it looks really positive.
Yeah, apparently she, they've got a project in Healdsburg and Santa Rosa currently under construction.
Santa Rosa is under construction on the former senior center site on Petaluma Hill Road, right there as you exit downtown and head north. And then Healdsburg, they're selected to be the affordable housing developer of Saggio Hills as an inclusionary housing piece to their overall development.
Looking forward to hearing more about that. Any information received after the agenda was hosted?
Two comment letters came in and those were provided to the planning commission for their review and the public. And the agenda will be amended to add them as a part of the items.
Great. Thank you. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.